Morning, everyone. I have 9:30 o'clock. We're going to please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First thing on the agenda is approval of minutes from October 20th, 2022. Are there any amendments? Hearing none, if there's no objection, those are approved. Next is approval of requisitions from November 3rd, $22,278.75. There's no objection. That is approved. Next is approval accounts payable from October 27th, 2022, in amount of $413,769.96. There's no objection. That is approved. Next is accounts payable from November 3rd, 2022, in amount of $279,984.69. There's no objection. That is approved. Next is approval of manual checks from October 28th, 2022, in amount of $15,621.17. There's no objection. That is approved. Next is manual checks from November 4th, 2022, in amount of $5,747.13. There's no objection. That is approved. Next is approval of payroll from October 28th, 2022, in amount of $285,706.13. There's no objection. That is approved. Are there any announcements or changes to the agenda?
No.
With that, we move or go to public comment. Remind everyone you have three minutes. I'm going to start in person from the list. Go online and then I'll come back to the room if there's anyone that would like to comment. First thing I have on the list is David Tab.
David Tab, lifelong Jefferson County resident taxpayer.
On the approval of the minutes of October 20th, according to your accounts payable, you approved over $1.5 million. There appears to be some road expenses. Thompson County EMS for $787,000, Parks and Recs for $93,000, the old Charlestown Library for $22,500. Is that for a year or a day? What's going on with that? Then we have rugged notebooks, $61,750. There's no information of where they're going, who they want to be distributed to, what they're being used for. That's a bunch of money. And you didn't put down whether it was budget neutral. It seems to be a magic word. On my personal public comment today, I propose that the Jefferson County Commission reestablish our ambulance and fire service to its previous status with the EMS assisting the staffing of all seven fire companies instead of this hostile takeover of emergency services that has been provided for over 180 years by independently seven independent operated fire companies. This whole thing should be at an end. Presentation six with Roger Goddard. It appears as a request being increased from $2 million to $8.1 million, eight pages of documents that does not justify the changes of impact fee usage. I don't think y'all have the authority to do that. The intended use was at the time that they received them. How you think that, or they think that you can change it around to do something else with it? There is, within these eight documents, it's $165 million of requested long-range requests for additional schools when in fact our population of students has been reduced over the years. Number seven, $19,000 for the JCD to have a social media coordinator. No description of job, how much an hour. Again, is it budget neutral? There's a whole lot of discrepancies within all this stuff. The EMSA presentation twelve. You guys really need to look at the 221 pages that is in the documents. A lot of it was incomplete. You really, really need to understand that. I take my time to do it all the time. I'd appreciate if y'all did say. Thank you.
So anyone else here that would like to make a vote comment? All right, with no one, we're going to move or public comment is closed. We can move to item number one. Ms. Angela Banks for both exonerations and proportions.
Angie, can you hear us? Send your name. Hey, but you shut that door. Can I get my... Angie? Hello? Hi.
Angie, can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, just miscommunication. Okay. I have one exoneration. It's in our 2022 real property book, Harpers Ferry District. It's, let's see, well, okay, it's ticket number 10553. It's property owned by Bakersfield Bible Church and their pastor is living there. We had it taxable. The church didn't realize they have to let us know what they're doing with the property. They aren't automatically tax exempt. It's how the property is being used. But anyway, it is a residence for their pastor. Assess value $80,600, tax amount $960.44.
I'm going to approve ticket number, exoneration number 10553.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Is there more discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries.
Okay, the second item is just to split a tax ticket. One portion goes to Michelle Hart, ticket number 304397, Charlestown District. She obtained the 2003 Dodge Ram, $3,100, tax amount $73.88. A 2012 Ford Fusion assessed at $2,500 and her, and that tax amount is $59.58. And then the second part of the ticket, which has been split to Spencer A. Wells. He has a 2018 Subaru Outback, assessed value $11,600, tax amount $276.45.
I'm moving to approve the split ticket of 304397.
Second. It's been moved to second. Is there more discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, the next item on the agenda is the sheriff, Mr. Pramit.
I have two items on your agenda. First, my home confinement, the current home confinement deputy is a part-time. Requesting that he moved to full-time so he doesn't have the annual commitment. We have our former full-time home confinement deputy is no longer in our employ. So he's the only home confinement deputy, part-time, and he's coming up on his hours.
Is this budget neutral, you know?
Yeah, it is.
With the other full-time person no longer in...
Right, that's right. She's no longer in our employ.
So making this, this person employee full-time, then he'll get benefits and everything?
Yes, she'll get what, he'll get what she had. And his current pay is $15 now.
I'm moving to approve reclassification Earl Gillis, full-time, please.
It's been moved to second. Is there more discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries.
Item number two, we've just received, we were awarded $15,000 from JAG grant. That helps pay for our PLO at Jefferson High School. I need it to be approved and signed by the president.
I'll move to approve the grant as presented by Sheriff, the justice assistance, the JAG grant, justice assistance grant.
There's a second.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Is there more discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries.
All the blue ones need your signature and the pink one needs a dark signature.
Next tab is agenda number three, Ms. Nikki Harris.
Good morning. So we have to, the campus is already set for November 14th. Essentially, what the commission has to do is set the time that you want to start and the location. Our office is recommending 9:30 and have it in the old commission room where we have always historically had our campuses. That allows us to have our stuff down there. Everything doesn't have to be moved by maintenance, the one and all. It's just, it's easier and the courthouse obviously is a more secure location. We're the only ones that have access to that, so.
You can lock that room and follow the balance and...
Exactly, exactly. There's no moving of anything. Once it's in there election night, it stays in there and it stays locked until campus.
I'm sorry, Nikki, did you say 9:30?
Yes.
If you say 9:30 courthouse, I say 9:30 courthouse. I'm moving motion to approve that. Your time and date.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved to second. Is there more discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries. So we're about 30 minutes ahead.
Is Jennifer coming live, do you know?
I believe she is. I don't think she's online, so.
Yeah.
Might have called down Lynn Yousis online. She could probably jump online. I don't know.
Well, this, but Lynn has to present. Some of that looks a little complicated.
Yeah.
Ryan was making his way over in the live ask and to come over early.
Did you want to take a break till Roger gets here?
Well, we could probably do number 13. Unless somebody's coming, that's right. Somebody's coming to present that. The Charlestown, all eight, Arlen.
Mr. Lutz is here?
Oh, yes.
So we could push that if you would like to. Mr. Lutz, will you write your presentation?
For the purpose of agenda, I have number eight.
I don't want to, not against my time, but I want permission and everyone else.
First off, I thank the commission for this time. And this was prompted by directive from the director of the West Virginia Conservation Agency, Brian Farkas, who will be leaving to go to Greener Pasture. Someone will be replacing him. And I'm sorry, Mr. Cochran isn't here to give you a thorough briefing on West Virginia Code Section 7-1-3 U as a uniform, which provides for the county commissions to take responsibility for flood control, stream bank maintenance, et cetera, et cetera, within the counties and also for the towns and municipalities to do the same. For the, I should have, well, I should have brought a copy of the code so that it could be incorporated for those who are on video, but I regret not doing that. I'd like to call your attention to the first exhibit in the folder. And this is a sample of the contract that the commissions and the town municipalities are directed to execute with the state of West Virginia for these water and flood control measures. This can be anything from stream abatement, debris removal, stream bank maintenance, road security, whatever affects stormwater. And as you can see on the back, Brian Farkas is the executive director. And he would, if he was going to remain with conservation, he would be the one as a co-signatory with the commission on this. And then I will call your attention to the next exhibit, which lays out the contract policies and procedures to be followed under this agreement. Anyway, the long and the short of it, it's more than you can read in ten minutes and digest. So the purpose of this request is to ask the commission to give us dates and times when the commission will be available for us to have someone from the conservation agency and the West Virginia Department come to Charlestown and explain all of this in detail, which they can do far better than I. Because I am on the board of directors of the West Virginia Conservation Agency, I was directed to bring this to your attention, albeit 18 months late. Because this was, the 7-1-3 uniform was enacted in the 2020 legislative session. Quite frankly, I assumed that it had all been passed off. And then when we had the ride, I read to us at the annual meeting last month, we found out that many of the commissions have not been approached. So that's why I'm here. In short, get everybody together, get everybody on the same page. Because what this means is there is state money available in the event of some kind of a flood or water-related disaster. If you don't take it, then you won't get that of the state money. However, not taking the state money may exclude, and I don't know this for a fact, may exclude you from federal funds. And I don't think the county wants to be in that position. So at least with this, and get to hear the whole enchilada from the state people, you'll know where you stand and decide what you, what you want to do. Any questions?
That seems pretty straightforward to me. It's with the commission's pleasure. I think right before budget season might be best. That way it's on our minds or it would be on your minds at that point. And you can set aside funds or if you deem so.
But you're not being required to set aside any, the commission isn't being required to set aside any funds. So you, the only thing that you'd be involving the budget would be you would, you might want to make an asterisk on some budget item that would say possible state funds for mitigation of such. But you're not being asked to any of any money.
Okay, my father assumed there would be some match, but that's not true.
So far, there hasn't been. Down the road, who knows? So in any way, the big thing for now is find out when we can get everybody together.
And this also implies the Chesapeake Bay initiative that Mr. Lutz and I have been broadcasting to you for quite some time. And you're not in compliance. Mr. Lutz just went to a seminar here a month or so ago. And that's where a lot of this stuff came up and came to a head that the stormwater provisions within the state of West Virginia have not been properly addressed. And the, of course, there's eight counties that have the Chesapeake Bay initiative requirements. The rest of it's in the Ohio Basin. So this is, they have money too, with $258 million available that's coming. So if you're not in compliance with this, then that money can't be used to assist you to be prepared as the conservation districts are already structured. We're already doing stream remediation structures and everything through Chesapeake Bay. But now they're requesting or requiring the counties and stuff to actually be involved as well, which should have been done a long time ago, but it was a long time from there. And the conservation districts are actually starting to be getting notoriety of what they have contributed over the years and all this stormwater and everything else with over 170, was it 178 dams?
171.
171 dams that are under...
Which 94 are in the eastern, eastern Puma Conservation Districts.
So, and, and they were done back in the 30s and 40s. So we're looking at, you know, hundreds of millions of dollars to do restoration. We had one done, $3 million said in Berkeley Springs, that if it had broken, it could have wiped out the whole town of Berkeley Springs. So this is just a tip of the iceberg. You need to be aware, you need to get prepared. And also, this is also getting into some of the structure with the local emergency planning committee that I brought to their attention in the last few meetings that I've been assigned to. So this is more than just rainwater. This, this is the whole deal. And I would encourage all of you to set a time. And it's just the time to get in doctrine so that you can come up to speed like Mr. Lutz and I or what really needs to be done.
Can I finally amplify what Mr. Tab has just said? He referred to the annual meeting on October 11th of the Chesapeake Executive Council meeting, which is a meeting of the governors and the designated representatives of all the states in the Chesapeake Bay watershed. Who, without insulting your intelligence, that's New York, Pennsylvania, Delaware, Maryland, West Virginia, and Virginia, and the District of Columbia. Mr. Michael Regan, administrator of the EPA, announced to us that meeting on the 11th that $222.2 million has been earmarked for the Chesapeake Bay watershed for fiscal year 2023. He did not say how it's to be allocated. However, if it's even on a proportional basis, we are about 10% of the Chesapeake watershed. So we, along with the Puma Valley District, a little part of Tupper, a little part of Red Fire and the Grove that are in the watershed, took come in for $25 million of Chesapeake Bay funds. Also, something as Mr. Tab was alluding to, the stormwater situation, it was kind of surprising to me. The four major sources of contamination for the Chesapeake Bay are, number one, roilers, which that is talked about, and Lancaster County and Eastern Shore, Maryland, Virginia. Second is dairy. And boy, they came down on Lancaster County, Pennsylvania, like a duck on a June bug. And then the third is other poultry. And the fourth is what's going to come by us, stormwater. Because West Virginia has this class five injection well system that they're, which if you say 50% of it is runoff or stormwater, you can put anything else in that hole. Well, Pennsylvania is getting ready to have a whip cracked over their heads because they are creating what they're calling the Clean Streets Program, which is going to come down really hard on vehicle pollution. That is, somebody sitting on the street with a leaking seal from an oil pan, they'll be, they'll be warned once, decided the second time. And it's going to come to the other jurisdictions in the watershed. So these are the things I'm here to politely ask that this be explored so that you can at least be on top of things before they hit you square in the face unawares. So I'm just about exhausted at the time.
Mr. Lutz, I still have a question. The, this is another one of the conference that you attended. Was that recorded?
Yes, it is recorded. It is the Chesapeake Executive Council. They meet annually. Typically, they go to a resort community like Ocean City or Virginia Beach, but this time they went to Washington. The governors are by the members of the Chesapeake Executive Council. Unfortunately, no representative from West Virginia bothered to attend this conference, which was a disappointment. But, you know, what can you do about it? You pull all the horses you got.
Thank you.
Actually, Mr. Lutz had to be head to hands, to even intent. I mean, here we are involved with tens of millions of dollars every year of the responsibility through the conservation district to ensure the integrity that these programs with farmers and, you know, lab programs, setbacks from streams, the fencing, drilling wells, water runoff. We've already been doing this for, you know, 30-plus years of very intense structure with the farms. That's why actually this area is not being impacted as great as some of the other places because they haven't done the best management practices. That's BMPs, acronyms. And you'll see it throughout all these structures and requirements and the, the best management practices that have been put together. And a lot of it's been developed by the conservation district. So again, we encourage you to take the time, get educated, get on board with this thing. It's not going to cost you money. Actually, it's going to help. It's going to bring money in to the county that you don't have to spend out from the county commission. And then you'll be prepared and ready for the next obstacle, you know, hurricane, terracyo, whatever's coming down the stream, that now we're better prepared and we have some funds and, and hopefully know where these problems are before they actually exist.
Can I speak? First, the statute, I hold in my hands an attorney general's opinion from 2020 that says the statute empowers the county commission, but it doesn't require it. So there's, there's a difference. You have authority to, to do this, but you're not required to do it. Second, the entire federal stormwater management scheme is a two-edged sword. There may be monies that are obtained by the county, but also look at Berkeley County. And Mr. Goodwin is back there. If you want to know something about the stormwater management difficulty that Berkeley County is in because of the whole Chesapeake Bay standards issue. And Mr. Goodwin has kept us out of it. And that's one reason that we haven't followed that because there are so many requirements that come along with that federal money and expenditures on the part of citizens. There's where, you know, you're, you know, the rain taxes and all that come. So obviously, it's the commission's decision and I'm not expressing an opinion for it or against it. I simply am saying that it needs to be entered into carefully because it's a two-edged sword. Mr. Goodwin is sitting there if you wanted to hear about the stormwater issue.
Well, I was going to suggest that our legal counsel and our county engineer confer on this information and just tell us where we are in relation to any regulations or stormwater improvement we can make and what are the pros and cons of entering into any agreement.
Everyone. Mr. Chairman, I was listening to Mr. Cochran speak. He triggered a couple more things in the back of my mind. This is kind of the 800-pound gorilla in the room. Because back in September, I was listening to WAMU Public Radio and the District of Columbia and most of their surrounding municipalities have entered into a study to create a permanent source of safe drinking water for those environs in the event of a disaster or a protracted drought. Well, the first thing that came to my mind was, Mr. Tab and I have talked about it over 60 years ago. The Corps of Engineers had the bright idea to build, to remove Millville Dam and put a 100-foot structure on the Shenandoah, which would back water, clear... and put a 100-foot structure on the Shenandoah, which would back water clear to front oil. This is something they're probably going to look at first. So the committee, regardless of what the pitfalls are, you find, you, you cover up one pitfall, you're going to find others. So this is why everyone needs to get together and get on the same page. Because we're also, in addition to the commission, you're going to need the Health Department, you're going to need Mr. Goodwin's office, you're going to need the development organization. You may even have to get a WECOD represent, Washington Area Council Government Representative involved in this because we're all in this together.
Well, I'll make a motion. So I move that the, our county administrator coordinate with the county engineer and our legal counsel to review these documents and give us options or strategies on what we should do.
Second.
Well, if I may raise.
So there's the motion. Would you be amenable to, instead of the engineer and our attorney, just the appropriate people? It might expand.
You're right. Yes. I'm amenable to that.
My second. Mr. Chair, is there a motion on the floor?
So is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all is in person. Aye opposed?
Mr. Chair, this is important. Does, does that include the conservation district at motion?
I would believe it would be up to the.
I would think, I would think so because that's an interesting part. So I would not.
So I wanted to.
That's what I was trying to bring up because it is not clear the way the motion was stated.
It's, I understand it's while there's a motion, we can't interact. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
If we could, move to Jennifer from Park City, Texas here. If you want to.
Sorry to make you wait.
I'm fine. Yeah, I have staff that's like two minutes away.
They're walking in.
Okay.
Oh, we have to sit open? Good morning, everybody. Thank you, guys, for your time this morning. My staff and I are here this morning to share with the commission that we were awarded the Austin Seapalmer Outstanding Facility Award through the West Virginia Recreation and Parks Association last month for the amphitheater at St. Michael's Park. We were to share with you guys. This award is given to outstanding facilities that are serving a large segment of geographic area and are aesthetically pleasing, have evidence of sound design, are programmed to maximum potential. We are very excited to accept the award on the commission's behalf and are grateful to have such a wonderful facility to share with our community. The amphitheater hosts to many events since its opening in 2018. Most notably, the Shenandoah Junction Love It Music Series, which is a pre-10-week summer content series that's held on Thursday nights from May to August. In 2022, our department has held over 30 events for our community. And the amphitheats are providing camps and classes, free antiquated concerts, a children's concert series, movie nights, our annual special community events such as our egg, Easter egg hunts, our Santa and Smores events, and our Halloween candy drop and magic show. We put together a short two-minute video to share with you that just touches on some of the fun that we had this past year. Very nice. Thank you. I also wanted to point out, I asked my staff if I'm here this morning. Are they all here? Becky, Brenda, David, and Tommy, because this award and everything that we do would not be possible without all of your hard work and dedication. They give all every day to make sure that we can do as much as we can for the community with what we have. I just wanted to thank them and thank them in front of you guys just to make sure that you know how, how important they are and how hard they work to make these, these events happen. So thank you to all of them. And we're excited for 2023. As you guys know, these two of the amphitheater is officially under contract. And they have started the, the work for the septic sewer line upgrades to see what that, what that's going to come in as. So we'll see if, what, where we go from there. But we're very excited to kind of come back in 2023 and have the restroom facility open and session, you know, to get through, and really expand what we've already been doing and, you know, bringing a lot more to the community. So just want to thank you guys for your, your past, present, and hopefully future support of our department and the amphitheater, and we really appreciate it.
If I could, would we possibly get a picture of you and the staff and the commissioners? I'd like to put that on the website with the award. So I think we should celebrate that. You guys did a phenomenal job. That is the crown jewel of Jefferson County, St. Michael's Park. So I think we need to celebrate that and let our constituents know how great the jobs you guys did. Thank you very much. So we could just come up in front of the room and say if you could snap a couple of pictures and we could kind of up a little bit and be kind of.
Get it together, guys. Spread the commission, put the commission on one side and on the other. Turn sideways, it makes people fit better.
All right, ready. One, two, three. Off to the cover. Smile today. Good job, Jennifer. N.T.
Thank you.
Thank you. God's very much.
Thank you.
And I would like to say too that Jennifer's leadership over the years has made a tremendous difference. Yes. Thank you very much.
So Roger, do you want to? First item I have is a request to allow for the reclassification of the lead building inspector position and the building plans review position from a 35-hour week, work week to a 40-hour work week. The Office of Building Permits and Inspections is experiencing a significant increase in voting permit applications resulting in an increased workload with building inspections and an increase in the backlog of building plan reviews. And we've already spent all of our FY 2023 overtime budget trying to keep up with that. And we're also getting a lot of traffic coming in the door where these guys get interrupted, have to stop and answer citizen questions. And we got to the point where we just said for the plan reviewer, you know, on these two, next two days, anybody that walks in the door is going to have to make an appointment to come back because, because he can't keep getting pulled off the desk reviewing plans. And, and that's where we are. The workload's pretty heavy. So rather than ask to hire another employee, it's less costly to increase the hours of two employees to a 40-hour work week. They're both in agreement with this. In addition, this is a budget neutral request. The finance director calculated the additional FY 23 budget cost for the reclassification is $12,241. However, we just, our, our new county planner just started yesterday. So we've gone four months without a planner and have that salary and benefit costs that wasn't spent. And that amounted to $23,330, which more than covers for this current fiscal year the additional salary and associated costs of the salary for those two to finish up this year. So the overall effect of the FY 23 budget is still a salary benefit savings of $11,000. And moving forward in FY 24, those two together with the associated additional costs that are on the salaries, like social security and stuff that the county pays, will be $19,000. So in FY 24, I'm going to ask that it remain and just, and it'll take $19,000 approximately to cover those. Continue it on. So I'm, I'm asking you to approve this action.
I'm going to approve the reclassification of the lead building inspector and the building plan review positions to a 40-hour work week effective November 14th, 2022.
Second.
So moving second, is there any more discussion? Hearing none, all is in person. Aye opposed?
Thank you. The next item. This item on the school board's request for approval of amendment number one to their FY 23 capital improvement plan was taken up at the county commission's October 6th meeting. I wasn't here at that meeting because I had gotten COVID and couldn't be here.
Thank you for that, by the way. Not forget, kids, not being here.
So it was presented, and my understanding is that this matter got tabled to seek a legal opinion from the county attorney, Nathan, on whether the school board can spend the accumulated funds, which is about $8 million in light of there being.
Mr. Goodwin, could I just interrupt?
Sure.
Because I have a conflict of interest on this issue as we discussed last time.
And you want an opinion, is my understanding, that could they, are they allowed to spend those funds in light of declining enrollment? And Nathan has a conflict and can't give an opinion on it. And I have looked through the state code and the ordinances, and I don't see anything that specifically addresses that. If there's a decline in enrollment to schools, if there's a drop-off in use of parks, if there's less ambulance calls in a year that they're not allowed to continue to spend the funds that they had accrued. The, the state code doesn't address it. The ordinances don't address it. And when you write an ordinance and you have the authority under state code, your ordinance pretty much mirrors what's said in state code. You don't go and add a whole bunch of other stuff because you don't have the authority to do it. So I don't see it there. It doesn't address it. Declining use, et cetera. It, it just doesn't address it. My take would be, and I'm not the attorney, that they accrued it and it was like a promise made to those people that you would build those facilities with those funds and that they should be able to spend those. That said, I also see that, you know, we've reduced the school impact fee to essentially a dollar. And that I would think that part of the reasoning behind that would be that due to declining enrollment and maybe belief that they don't need as much facilities currently, you've kind of already addressed that matter by doing that. So my take is, I think they're, they're, they're allowed to spend the funds. So your options are to seek an opinion from another attorney that doesn't have a conflict, approve the amendment request as submitted, or disapprove the amendment request. And they, school board asked it to be put back on the agenda today, and that's, that's why I'm here to present.
I know you're not an attorney, but I also read the code and I agree with you with your assessment. The only reason I paused this because I was told by a board member that, that we could collect funds during a declining enrollment, but we couldn't spend it. So that's why I paused that. Obviously, they were trying to lobby me to start collecting funds. I wish they would have done their homework. We would have avoided this delay. So I would be happy to move this motion to approve the school, schools FY 23 capital proven plan. Number one is requested is presented.
So moving second, is there any more discussion? Hearing none, all is in person. Aye opposed? All right, with that, we can go to agenda, agenda item number five, Ms. Lynn Fields. Do we need to, we're pretty sure if you would. I'm moving convenience to do sharing.
Seven.
Moving second, is there any more discussion? Hearing none, all is in person. Aye opposed?
Here from the probate office and the county court office to present three probate matters before you today. You don't need to go on a specific route to go and.
What happened?
So the first matter being the verified petition for elective share on the estate of the, the St. Azada estate. Did I pronounce that correctly?
Yeah, I was trying.
So this one I have, and I think you should have as well. There is an agreed upon order from attorneys on both sides, Mr. Dorsey and Mr. Gay. And the, in the agreed upon order, they are requesting that the matter be referred to Frank Hill. So, and Frank has accepted that. So that one kind of remedies itself. So it just needs to get your signature on the agreed upon order.
So you need just a motion for.
To accept it.
Okay, I'm moving a motion to allow our chairman to sign the agreed upon order as presented by Ms. Lynn Fields. So in the estate of.
Yeah, I was saying, St. Azada.
There you go.
I'll second that.
So moving second, is there any more discussion? Hearing none, all is in person. Aye opposed?
So the second matter would be the petition on the estate of John H. Alger. This one is a first for me. I've never, I've, I've heard, but I've never had to deal with a matter where someone needs to be, someone is alleged to be deceased and it needs to be. to be, someone is alleged to be deceased, and it needs to be confirmed whether they're deceased or not, and that's, that's the case in this situation. Mr. Alger, as the petition states, was a resident of Jefferson County and went missing in nineteen ninety-eight. To my knowledge, there has been no, he hasn't popped up on anything. His whereabouts are still in question and unknown. There was a family member that, when she heard that this was coming to, would possibly be in front of the county commission, she sent an email where she detailed some, some information that she had, but, I mean, this has not been confirmed or denied. But I think what I would like to do with Nathan's permission is to, Mr. Cradville is present, if he would like to speak on the, on the matter.
I guess what we need to determine is how the commission wants to deal with this. The statute says that you can have a hearing on this, or you can refer it to a fiduciary commissioner. At this point, I do not know of any persons, and I guess I would ask Ms. Fields, who does an impeccable job at this sort of thing, by the way. But have, have we published a notice and everything, or is that what you...
Yes.
You've already published a notice for this hearing. So, so then the commission has to determine if it wants to hold a hearing now on that issue, or if we want to refer to a fiduciary commissioner, you know, which we often do in these things simply because they're a little better suited to take evidence and better suited, spend more time on it than the commission normally has. But that would be, you know, that would be up to you. What has to be shown is that the person has been removed for seven years and that there's been a contact with people you would normally think that they would have contact with, if children, whoever. There is an email in the packet from another family member that said that there was some sort of belief that the person might still be alive and some sort of investigation. We don't have any real information on that. So, and I don't think there's anyone here to testify about that. So that would just be what the commission, I would think, needs to do, make that decision if you want a hearing now, if you want to refer to fiduciary commissioner.
Do you want to hear from Mr. Cradville first before you decide that?
I'm fine with it.
Yeah, I am too.
I mean, it doesn't hurt to get more information.
All right. Mr. Cochran, if we have Mr. Cradville, we are holding a hearing, or are we just gaining more information to make a decision?
That's up to you. But, I mean, you're supposed to have, you know, a hearing if you want to make a determination about the ultimate issue. That's all. And hearing, you know, you're here, you can do it.
And the ultimate issue is to decide if Mr. Alger is deceased or not?
Yes.
It's, I always thought that'd be something that went to a judge, like, I mean, role in competency. I thought that would go to them.
Well, the statute is a little unclear on that, but it does, the statute gives the commission authority of all things probate. And when you look at this particular section of statute in chapter forty-four, it seems to give the county court the discretion to do this.
We found in our office, we found paperwork from a previous hearing that was, that was held, and it, the same matter was before the county commission, it was back in like the eighties, I think. And the matter was before the county commission, and from our rec, from what we found, it had not been referred. I thought that it, it had to go to circuit court as well, but in speaking to Mr. Cradville and talking to Nathan, I think that it's something that the county commission can pull on again. I'm not an attorney, so I'm not certain, but...
Well, if you look at the statute, it's talking about in the situation where letters of administration is, are being applied for, the county court or clerk there satisfied that the person is, would be entitled to be published. In the, in the earlier parts of the statute, it just seems to be referring back to the county court, and the county court, which is the county commission, makes all the decisions in this. So it's a little unclear, but I think that there's statutory authority to pursue that here. Obviously, Mr. Cradville did, or else he wouldn't file it.
And for my clarification, if we refer it, it still comes back to us with the recommendation. We make the final decision.
That's...
It might require getting to the weeds more than we can actually do.
Right.
I think we should, I would think, I would want to refer to a committee, or fiduciary commissioner. Commissioner, fiduciary commissioner, yeah. Yeah, that's, that's my take on it, I would think.
It might take more investigating than we can do in like twelve hours.
I agree. I agree. Yeah. I'll move a motion to move this to a fiduciary commissioner.
Sir, second? It's been moved and seconded. Is there any more discussion? Do we have the name, or do you just...
John, John H. Alger.
From the state of Johnny Alger. Okay, I'll make my motion to include this name.
Okay, so more discussion? Hearing none, all is in person. Aye. Opposed? Much care.
May I suggest that Mr. Hill be appointed commissioner here? This is fairly less vast experience with these kinds of cases.
It's, I'm sure the probate office has their... Thank you.
And then the last matter is the estate of Norman Robert Brady. Again, should have the petition for you where the petitioner is requesting that the current executor be removed from the estate, and then she lays out her reasoning why in the petition, and then the executor has responded to the petition and gone down the list of her, her points and stated whether he agrees or disagrees with others. You should have that before you as well. Mr. Cradville is also the attorney for the petitioner on this matter. So as far as the probate office is concerned, Mr. Brady, the executor, the current executor on the estate, has, is not remiss in any of his duties as the executor. He's filed the appraisement, although Ms. Brady alleges that there are some shortcomings with the, with the appraisement, and he defends those in his, in his response. He's also filed, he has one thing that he has not done, which honestly, some people just don't know that it's, that it's necessary, is he has not filed a yearly accounting. But he has filed, with his response, he has filed a final accounting for the estate, which is also attached in the paperwork that you should have in front of you. So the matter before you is whether or not the petition lays out enough evidence to remove him as the executor on the estate.
Well, as you say, he's fulfilled the requirements.
As, as far as our office is concerned, yes, ma'am.
If he, if he has fulfilled his obligations, we had, I mean, how would I have to be obligated to remove him? I don't know.
We, we can deny the petition. That's the common procedure. Yes. Yeah. I'll move to deny the petition to remove Matthew Brady as a personal representative of the estate of Norman Brady, deceased.
So it's been moved and seconded. Is there any more discussion? Hearing none, all is in person. Aye. Opposed? Yeah, I was gonna bring you into regular session. I'm moving, we go back into regular session. Second. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any more discussion? Hearing none, all is in person. Aye. Opposed? Much care. We're back to being regular county commission. Five minutes? We are on a five-minute basis.
Thank you. It's using a...
It should be...
Let's see, just one.
You, you ready?
Oh, yeah. Okay.
Cindy?
Yes?
Can you flip that to May?
Everybody good? All right, I'll call us back to order. Next item I have, agenda number seven, Mr. Dave Darks.
Sorry to tear you up here in the gym, but...
We're thirty minutes early.
Well, I was, we were in, we were in process, talking to project. You will help us if we were, I apologize. But we, we sent this request in last week. We met with the executive committee of the JCPA to seek their consent approval, and we met prior with Deputy County Minister and Mr. Nissel a week prior. We had brought in an intern from Shepherd University. Her name's Taylor Sis. She's kind of morphed in, she is well-versed in what she does, and saw an opportunity for her to grow with the office. We've identified some funding. We would like to request you, this is budget neutral, we're not asking for money, we would like to use identified funding sources we have in our existing budget to help bring this individual on part-time during fiscal year, and we're just asking if we could move nineteen thousand five hundred through the county to bring Taylor on payroll, because on a ten ninety-nine, she's not making any. So, but we've identified the, the resources in our existing budget to break her in, if you all approve that.
Only burn, will it burn some of your budget next year?
That's a great question, Commissioner, and I don't know, and I'll be quite candid with you. She's a graduate senior, and we don't know what that may entail.
And she might move on some...
She might, but, you know, there could be the potential for us to look at adding some growth to the, I want, I don't want to tell you a hundred percent confident for that, but for the interim for the fiscal year where we're in, she is a pleasure to stay through us, at least through June. So because the semester's over in December, you know, that May timeframe. So, I mean, I don't know, and I apologize, I don't want to tell you something I can't tell.
That's all right. It's just going forward, it might be cut.
It could, it could, or, but we hope you see the work that this individual does, and we could look at the opportunity for it. We don't know if it's grad school, we don't know what it's for, but, but in the interim, it's a great outlet for us, and it's a wonderful investment for the county. You're going to see huge growth from it.
Thank you. Sorry, I cut you off there.
Oh, I was just gonna ask, so the physician, like, what kind of benefit do you see for me?
Oh, it's a, I apologize, it's social media coordinator, and I, I hope you can see there's an upswing in what we're trying to do, posting content specific about business growth, posting content about opportunities for investment in the community. She set up a new channel for us, for Instagram. She's an administrator on our, all of our other amenities, and investments you all have made prior for us with the website and video integration and other, other mediums that we have. She's even built out a calendar for the next sixty days of thematic activities and Thursdays. First quarter of next year, we're looking at, you know, these are available properties, why should invest in community? So there's a huge upswing. And I'm even kind of intimated and hinted to Mr. Nissel that there was more funding somewhere, a little pickling, there was more funding somewhere in the county that we could really look at her integrating social media for his agency. And his other departments needed integration through existing media, social media channels for the county, uh through county administration.
We have every intention to partner with Mr. Dennis on capitalizing on this position to help us.
Yes, sir.
For some.
And I was just picking, but she's very well made, she's a quick learner, she's a, what I appreciate, she's a daughter of West Virginia, she's from uh Upstream County. Good background, good kid, but uh it's a great investment for all of us, you'll see it, it's one. And if, if time allows, we'll come back in December and introduce you where first of the year. But she'll be gone, I apologize.
Um, I, you know, I, I would just say, I, I certainly don't, since this is budget neutral for next year, this year, remain for this year, I don't have a problem with it. But, but I would just reiterate to her that there is potential it could be cut in the budget for, for F I twenty four. Moving forward, four twenty four, uh my wish list is to take a good hard look for our budget and our first responders, any of that services providers in their salary ratings, because we're, everybody else around us is bumped up. So, there is a, I personally want to take a hard look at that uh and, and concentrate on, on those, those efforts.
I understand.
So, I'm just being, I'm just being uh upfront.
Well, the, the reason, the motivation for this is we have the funding currently and it allows us to progress and do some things. If we were looking at going into private sector. This is for three times the money, it could be well in thirty to sixty thousand dollar range for what we have limited hours, uh even engagement we have with her. So, uh, it, it's a good test run for all of us. And, you know, I, I understand priorities and, and you know, we, we, we've not come to you with unrealistic opportunities in my short tenure issue. Uh, we try to be good stewards of our dollars, taxpayer dollars, but we, even if there was an opportunity to look at this with her or someone else in the future, this, you know, we would not. It wouldn't be good, even a realistic uh request, so, but I do understand, you know, we've got a lot, you, you all got a lot facing the law. We've got eight percent inflation rate, global inflation rate, triple, double digits, so, yeah, we do understand, so, things are realistic.
Yeah, so I'm going to hit approve uh of the uh part time social media coordinator uh paid from the J C D A budget. That, that this is a budget neutral and this is a budget neutral.
What's, I want to add, as I was saying, do we need names, start date, end date?
Uh, yes.
We're heading or.
We do know. What's uh?
Taylor Sis.
Taylor, oh, yeah, Taylor Sis.
Yeah, I'd like to start it, we'll do uh December one if you would be.
And the starting date will be December one?
Yes, sir.
And the, the hour and grade?
Uh, seventeen twenty five.
Seventeen twenty five an hour.
Thank you. Thank you. Apologize.
It's alright, it wasn't.
No, that's my fault, I shouldn't have made that, sorry.
Is there a second?
A second.
Alright, it's been moving second, is there any more discussion? Hearing none, all is fair to say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Appreciate it.
So we're forty minutes early. So county clerk is here, but that might take.
I'm not sure if the functional standard are here. You know, they're not here yet, so, and they're not scheduled to be here till eleven forty. You wanted to move ahead uh with uh, oh, Shannon?
It's bound to be.
Ready? I, I.
And Commissioner, for the reason that I expressed to you uh last meeting, I believe, um, we have a.
Morning, Commissioner. Morning. So I'm coming before you this morning firstly, out of courtesy and transparency, to let you know what I would like to do with some of the physicians that follow under, that are under the county clerk. And it has to do with the classification and the pay scale, it is totally budget neutral, I'm not giving them any increases in money or anything. I have eight of my clerks, two private clerks, four of my recording vital statistics, deputy clerks and two voter and elections deputy clerks. That I would like to be classified in grade four, currently they're in grade two. And my chief deputy clerk to be moved from grade six to grade seven. All these grade changes will be budget neutral. Y'all have any questions on it?
I, I just would like to understand purpose of why you want to do this.
I wanted to do this three years ago when we, when the commissioners adopted the new pay scale and it was just never done.
Okay, so I, I don't understand what will change. I mean, I'm not opposed to it, I just don't understand.
It says their classification.
I think when we corrected the pay scale, it, it cost us a lot of money and we couldn't afford to bump them up at that time, as I think.
Okay, but she just said it was budget neutral, so it's not.
Well, now, it's, we've already done the schedule adjustment, so, so we're kind of a few years in the room from that.
And I have the backup, I mean, where I had said I wanted it done, it's just. That's what I, I just let you all know. Okay, the rest of it is the discussion of my duties handled by the.
Yeah, I think you want to, let's pick actual, when you guys, when that person, we can.
Okay.
So we can move if you want to move.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to um bump the county clerk's employees, she has eight clerks, um, the ones that need to go from two to four. That she identified and then the one chief deputy clerk from six to seven, this is a grade level change and there's no impact on the budget.
So. It's been moving seconds, is there any more discussion? I'll just reiterate what I said to Mr. Jarvis, you know, budget's coming up, we might make some changes, so just be aware. Uh, any more discussion? Hearing none, all is fair to say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, where she cares?
Okay, the other two things for, for discussion is the duties handled by the county clerk and discussion of policy three, three nineteen, which kind of go hand in hand. I'm gonna be, I'm gonna get a reading on this, so if you all just would listen, I'm going to hand out copies after I read all this to you. Okay, creation of the county clerk, West Virginia Constitutional, Constitution, Article Nine, Section Twelve creates county clerk. Constitutional duties, West Virginia Constitution, Article Nine, Section Eleven, provides that. Shall have the custody of all deeds and other papers presented for record in their counties and the same shall be preserved therein or otherwise disposed of as now is or may be prescribed by law. Additionally, it provides all exercise any powers and discharge any duties here to, for, conferred on or required of any such tribunal. Or the clerk of such tribunal respecting the recording and preservation of deeds and other papers presented for record. And such other matters as prescribed by law to be exercised and discharged by the clerk thereof. West Virginia Constitutional, Constitution, Article Nine, Section Twelve, provides that the clerk's other's duties shall be prescribed by law. So, basically, um, this discussion came about because of the Tyler system. The Tyler system has been identified as the official record keeping system, one of them, of Jefferson County. So, um. I'm sure water. Policy three nineteen. And the workflows. So, this policy was used when the state auditor uh gave the report on our findings of Jefferson County. Jefferson County clerk and the I T director shall be the only ones with administrative access to Tyler. The I T director or his representative will be the only system administrators to the Tyler system. No other employees of the county shall have administrative access to the Tyler system without written approval of the county clerk. So, this is, section is taken directly out of the auditor's findings, the last paragraph of page five of the West Virginia. State auditor's finding states, the county clerk has the statutory authority to access or request all support documentation necessary to assist in the performance. Of the county clerk's statutory responsibilities. Also furthermore, Commission Policy three nineteen, Section four one states, the county clerk shall have administrative access to the Tyler system. In addition, Section three point two provides a definition of an administrative administrator account, which appears to define such authority as being system wide and does not limit this authorization to specific modules. The county clerk shall approve requests for changes, additions and deletions, deletions to the Tyler system. So, and I've given you all. The following in the past, I'm gonna give it to you all again, it's from Laura Ash, he's the deputy state auditor. And he um sent an email on Wednesday, June the fifteenth of twenty twenty two. Which states, on April twentieth of twenty twenty two, our office issued report of examination of Jefferson County. Page four and five of that report dealt with operational concerns and recommendations. In this section, it was pointed out that among other duties, the county clerk is responsible for accounting of all bills, debts, per payer, payroll and perform all duties associated with payroll. Oversee and monitor the county budget. Having those responsibilities would lead one to believe that the county clerk and or his or her designate should be the only people allowed to make. Or alter entries in the electronic files. Good internal controls would dictate that other people should be limited in viewing the data in the system, which could include running up of the reports. So, I feel since the auditor made their findings on three nineteen, that um at this time, there should be no changes to it. However, I propose a new policy that talks about system access and approval policy. And what I've done is I've taken three nineteen as um. The background for this policy and marked out um and added some things to it. My question is, do you want me to read this or would you rather take it and read it yourself and we can come back and discuss it? At a special session?
I probably just want to see it.
You'd like to see it?
Yeah.
Do you want me to read it so the public knows what it's about, what I propose?
Yep.
Okay. The purpose of, I, I title it, the system access and approval policy, so that would be for the whole Tyler system. The purpose of it is to establish sound internal controls for access to the Tyler, Tyler system. Certain county employees and other individuals connected with Jefferson County government must have administrator system access to the Tyler system to allow the county government to operate in an efficient and effective manner. The policy is necessary to minimize the risks associated with granting access to the Tyler system. Authority, the county clerk and the county commission, this term is referred to as the county, shall be responsible for the implementation, interpretation, enforcement of this policy. The county shall issue, maintain and update any procedure, control, inform needed to ensure compliance with this policy in any West Virginia federal law. Definitions, access privileges means system permission associated with an account, including permission to access, to process transactions, create or change settings, et cetera. Administrator account or administrative account means user accounts with privileges that have advanced permissions above a regular user's ability on the Tyler system. That are necessary for the administration of this system. An administrator account can authorize the creation of new users, change account permissions and modify security and other system performance settings. Authorized requestor is a Jefferson County elected official or Jefferson County department head who is responsible for requesting access to the Tyler system on behalf of the users in a particular county office. Least privilege means users or resources will be provided with a minimum privileges necessary to fulfill their roles and responsibilities. Significant change means any change in access privileges, a change to administrative procedures or process, a change in system performance settings. Or a change in workflow other than workflow changes on the department level. Designate means an employee who's authorized to provide the approvals enumerated in this policy, all designates shall be appointed in writing. Which writing shall indicate whether the employee is a permanent or temporary designate. This writing will be submitted to the I T department, it will set the system up with these approvals for the designate. These written appointments will be kept for audit, audit purposes. A permanent designate is an employee who has been permanently authorized to act on behalf of an official. A temporary designate is authorized to act on behalf of an official on a temporary basis in the event of a physician vacancy or absence. Such delegation shall only be in effect for the period necessary to cover the absence, vacation and shall not exceed six months. Users are all employees who are authorized to access the Tyler system. System access, the clerk of the county commission and the I T director shall have, all have administrative access to the Tyler system. All access requests must originate from an authorized requestor or designate and be approved in writing by the county. By the clerk of the county commission or her designate before a new user can be added to the Tyler system by the I T department. Access to specific system functions shall be consistent with each user's scope of employment and shall be granted. On a least privileges basis and be approved by the county clerk. The I T director or his representative will be the only system administrator. Any significant change must be requested in writing and approved in writing by the clerk of the county commission or her designate before those changes can be implemented by another user with the administrative access. Requests for significant changes can only be requested by a user with an administrator account and approved by the county clerk. Audit, the clerk of the county commission shall have the ability at any time to request a log of any user's activity, determine if all users. Have adhered to the procedures contained in this policy. Each year, the clerk of the county commission and the I T director shall review the list of users and their associated access for appropriateness. And then talks about violations. It's not changed at all. Okay, so, um. You all understand that I'm an official record keeper for the county, that is one of my duties. So I will be passing that policy out to you as well, as well as these notes I'm reading from. Okay. Record keeping, um, finance policies. The county clerk will be involved in updating, developing any policies and or procedures that pertain to the duties of the clerk's office. Tyler system, accounting and financial management, financial record keeping requirements, any changes made within the electronic record keeping system, payroll functions and account payable functions. The county clerk's office will direct trained employees in the process of procedures for maintaining the county's financial records. The budget, the commission prepares and approves the budget. The clerk recommends that the person preparing the budget attend the annual uh West Virginia State Auditor Office trainings. I don't think that's been done in the past, I highly recommend it. As a required signee of the budget, the clerk should be included in the entire process and copied on all submissions, commission communications and presentations. Page five of the auditor's findings, while it is permissible for statute for the commission to prepare the county budget, the county clerk should monitor the budget using a budget control report. Any revisions made to this report should only be made by the county clerk's office. The county clerk's office will need to be provided copies of the budget revision so that they can apply these revisions to the budget control report. The process for revising the budget is summarized in the budget process section of the county clerk's manual. The clerk will be entering the changes into the Tyler system, scanning the commission approval backup along with a copy of the state approved budget. approval backup along with a copy of the state-approved budget. The county clerk provides oversight for county budget once funds have been appropriated. The clerk shall amend the budget as approved by the county commissioners using a process of budget revisions. Through using the monthly budgetary report, the county clerk will monitor the county's budget and will assist the department heads and elected officials in the management of their funds, including evaluation of changes requested through budget revisions. The clerk will help to identify problem areas and will assist elected officials or department heads to resolve any issues with either an internal budget revision or state budget revision. The county clerk, elected officials, and department heads should be all on the approval workflow for all their internal and state budget revisions. The county commission is to approve, the county commission is to approve all budget revisions, internal and state, via a regular county commission meeting. The county clerk's office is the only office to have access approval to process these changes within the Tyler system. Once state budget revisions are approved by the county commission, the county clerk's office will submit them to the state auditor's office for review and approval, and when these revisions are returned to the county by the auditor's office, the county clerk's office will make the necessary change within the Tyler system and scan into the Tyler system the supporting documentation. The clerk's office assures compliance with federal, state, and local accounting principles, procedures, and financial record keeping requirements. The financial statement. According to the state auditor's office, the county clerk is responsible for preparing the financial statements to be presented to the commission for review and approval. The Assessor's Valuation Fund is another report that's to be prepared by the county clerk. Accounts payable: The county clerk's office will administer and monitor all vendor contracts to assure compliance and consistency with the county goals and financial resources. Unless they are an employee of the county, all vendors shall have an agreement on file with the clerk's office to include the name and address of the vendor, service being provided, terms of service, and billable amount. All contracts should be uploaded into the Tyler system. All payables must be approved by the county clerk. All necessary backup must be provided, including separation agreements, contracts signed during hiring that state any special conditions of that hire related to pay, leave, et cetera, before any payouts will be processed. Payroll: Payroll, this has been stated before, I just want to readdress it. Based on West Virginia code, there should be no retroactive pay. Managers and elected officials need to be on top of their employee merit increases effective date. According to Code 677, no extra compensation salaries not to be increased or diminished during the term. No extra compensation shall be granted or allowed to any public officer, agent, servant, or contractor after the services have been rendered, nor shall the salary of any public officer be increased or diminished during his term of office. Now, to go back to payroll, payroll, HR-related functions, all payroll deductions. For example, to include tax changes, direct deposit updates, deductions, all things payroll related are to be processed and approved by payroll. No other department or personnel shall have access to make changes to payroll. The payroll clerk is responsible for entering all paperwork and entries into the Tyler system related to salary deductions, all things impacting the employee's pay. Payments and/or remorals may not be processed if supporting documentation is not provided to the county clerk's payroll department. The county clerk's payroll department will enter any additions, deletions, or changes pertaining to pay into the Tyler system. If these changes are made on ESS, employment, self-service, then the payroll clerk will be notified and be an approver of any changes. The clerk's office shall have the access to all agreements, including severance agreements pertaining to payments, and should be submitted with a personal action form. Clerk of the county commission, the clerk shall take minutes of meetings, keep records for all proceedings, and preserve all orders of the county commission. All proceedings are to be transmitted to the county court. So, the commission staff have been taking the minutes in the commission meetings for some time. While, while I am not opposed to continuing this practice, the clerk shall review, approve, and then sign the minutes before they are posted to the county website. The clerk recommends that it is noted in the minutes that the commissioner who makes a motion, and also the commissioner who moves to second that motion. There are some reports that require both the commissioner that made the motion and also the seconded, so I just think that should be annotated in the minutes. That is all I have. I'm going to go ahead and pass this out to you all, so you read everything that I just said. So, I'd like for y'all to take the time to read it, look at it, process it, and then come back together and have the discussion. And we can either do it in open session, or we can do it with John, I don't, you know.
We're all sick of COVID-19, but it was the third and it's still making people really
Did you cue it? I did not.
I think it would be best for us to digest this and bring it back in a commission, because it would be our decision, I believe.
Yeah. Okay.
I agree.
Okay, so I will move back to that. Thank you. Yep.
If I may, one thing I think that is coming up on the agenda is the position description. And in all 319, these responsibilities and the position description, they're all knitted together. So, if you were to read both these changes that the clerk should have brought forward, that would certainly have an impact on the position description. So, just want to, just remind this body that that has to be part of the equation, that we can't just ignore that. So, you know, we have that on the agenda to talk about today, but I don't know if you want to continue that discussion today or your thoughts, but I'm just, I'm saying it's all, it's all
Wrapped around the same ass.
All wrapped around the same ass, but yes, absolutely. I don't know what your thoughts are on that, but that's
Because I have thoughts, but I'm just debating if we want to wait to get there.
Yeah, we could wait until we get to that, because other people may want to wait.
Next item I have on the agenda is item number nine. It's Brendan Craig Agnew from the Penguin.
My name is Sam Byler. I'm a lawyer here in Charlestown, if you don't remember me. I'm here, however, not as a lawyer, but in my capacity as president of Melvin T. Strider Funeral and Funeral Hall. I'm proud to have with me Craig Agnew, who submitted the material too, which I hope you've had a chance to get at. My understanding is you have a full agenda today, so we'll both try to summarize very briefly what we submitted and why the request was made. But I'd like, just for a moment, to introduce you to Mr. Agnew. He is a veteran of the United States Army. He served some 10 years in our service. He's a veteran of the Desert Storm conflict and is a licensed funeral director, both in our state and in Virginia, with considerable experience. So, I'm proud that he's here with us and he can answer the questions you might have about these things far better than I can. The substance of what transpired that brought us here is that we received at the funeral home a call from the medical examiner, Mr. Shirley, indicating that he thought it would be helpful if there was some additional cooler space for bodies in our county, as the county has grown, particularly with increased accident fatalities, drug overdoses, and those sorts of problems. The idea, as we talked about it, evolved, and he indicated to me that he thought that in the past, a few years ago, the county had helped with the purchase of a similar unit at another funeral home. The substance of what we have submitted to you is exactly that. We've provided you with an indication of what we would propose to do. When we looked at this, we did try to find a reasonably priced unit. Like everything else, prices have escalated. But the substance of the request is to request the funding, and of course, then the county would have the use of the additional three, three-unit mortuary cooler, which will be at Strider Funeral Home over here on, off of the Boulevard in Grants. The cost is set forth in the retina application. Mr. Agnew may have something to add, but it is way beyond what I understand about it. But again, we appreciate the chance to be here and hope you'll consider. Yeah, thank you. I think he's covered most of it, unless you have any questions.
I seem to vaguely remember that we did do something with
Blue Brown.
But now, at the other funeral home?
Edmonds.
Edmonds, Edmond Spencer Norton, I was trying to think of all those names, that we did help pay for part of the cooler or something, I can't remember exactly, that's my problem. But I know we, they have offered their facilities to us for use, and so, you know, I don't know what we would need to do on the legal front as far as if we moved ahead with this initiative.
What I was going to suggest is if legal could find it, if we had an MOU with them, and see if we can
Yeah, and I can, I can try to do that, that for my time, and in my records, I don't have, and if I look, there may be one floating right there. While I'm talking, I say something else. This section of the state really needs an official mortuary medical team. That's just dollars too.
Yes.
And we've been dealing with this process for years. With that said, I, from a legal perspective, I'm not a great fan of doing this simply because I'm not a great fan of anything that could bring liability to the county. However, the reality is that we've had to deal with this issue simply because the medical examiner doesn't accept all of the deceased, only once where there's issues, but usually ones where they suspect a murder or something. But, so, that leaves us with having to deal with these bodies, and there's just not any good choices, so, you know. The other thing I would say is the medical examiner is apparently the one that approached these gentlemen. I would say that if we pay for this, that we should be able to use it for the ones, the cases that we have, not just the ending cases, and I assume that would be neat too. So, anyway, I was going to look for the documents and report back.
Well, and I think it would be nice to have a statement from the mental full examiner, what the needs are, and maybe we can build a case about something more suit the needs of a growing area.
And then if, if we can proceed, then it's a type of, or the county can use that, the medical examiner can use that.
Right, yeah.
So, is the will of the commission to table this and have Nathan look and bring it back?
Yeah. We need more research and see how we can approach it.
In the meantime, we can also try to get a letter from the medical examiner.
Yeah.
If you, okay, because I think that would
Yeah.
Clarify some things.
It would be a foundation.
There are, there is the issue of the unclaimed bodies. They're not a result of a homicide, but nobody claims, and so, we need a place to store those.
Well, we had a lot of that with
So, and again, my next question, my next thought is, and hey, I've been talking about this, is that the opioid money that's coming forward, that might be an avenue, a funding avenue to fund this request as well.
Well, you know, this would be something new at Strider's, but we might have to go back to the other funeral home too and see what their capacity issues are. I mean, if we get opioid money, hopefully that would be something we could address with it.
So, we have been talking about that, thinking about it, so we'll dig into that a little bit deeper and try to get back to you folks within the next couple of weeks and see what we find, and also look at the brand of the opioid money, see if we can use that for, I think it would be a good, a good use of the dollars.
Unfortunately.
I won't wait till I think of that, but
I'm sorry, be sure I understand that would be helpful if we asked the medical examiner to buy the letter, or is that something?
Yes.
I just want to make sure I know what my responsibility is.
Or maybe it would be more official for our county administrator to request that.
Yeah, we'll, we're contained with you, we'll draft some things, just to make sure we're, we'll point with that, and we'll, I'll be able to look at, see if there's an existing MOU. We'll also look to see if we can use that, that opioid money to fund this request. So, those are pretty cool.
Thanks so much. Okay.
Thank you.
Skip Nathan for a little bit, next I have is item number 12, the image transition.
I don't know if Nate, Nate, do you have a lot? Because we may be able to discuss that. Are you going to be moving?
Actually, I got
I'm hungry.
So, number 11, we are done.
We will note that first time.
I think it was one other time. Sometimes I put things on here that I think may have a development that you need to address, but then if there's no development
Come on up, Bob.
Please, please.
I'm clearly disappointed with having Nathan. I look forward to this. I know, you trademarked that, that name.
Nathan Cox.
That's right.
We'll have that next week.
All right, so the EMS transition is rolling away. I'm here just to give you the monthly update, and I do, as you see on the agenda, I need some, some guidance or some help or something with one, one particular area of it, where we're at, what we've completed for the mechanical readiness inspections that need to be done with each of the ambulances that the county has purchased. We've completed four of those, the fifth one is at the circle now. The idea of those is so that we can go bumper to bumper on these units, identify anything that, you know, just needs general maintenance, or, you know, minor repairs, or also to try and identify things that, you know, these, these tires are good, but you're going to want to look at replacing them in six months. We'd rather schedule those kinds of things and get them done before there are problems rather than, it'd be a problem when we get a phone call that, you know, this thing broke and we can't, you know, the ambulance is not working. The markings, lettering, striping, all that jazz, that is complete on two ambulances, the third and fourth are at the markings vendor now. They're working quickly, I don't want to make it sound like they're behind, they're actually moving much faster with that than we thought they would. We've had some delays in getting things over to them because of the ambulance breakdowns that occurred that have thrown off our schedule. So, the issuers are trying to get nine ambulances right now through this whole entire process, and we established the schedule, but then, well, two things. One, you know, we can't just take all nine and send them somewhere and say, send them back when it's done. We've got to keep everything running in the county and at different places and whatever. And two, as some unexpected breakdowns have happened, we've had to sort of change up the schedule. We We, we have a standing weekly IT meeting with the ECC, with Jeff and Russ and Tom. Can't believe I forgot Tom. So that's quite a think tank there, and it wears me out every single time, but if I'm on leave, I have a headache because of all the words and acronyms and things. But, you know, they suggested, and we agree, that there's so much on the communications and IT front of this transition that has to be touched, that we sort of need to stay in regular weekly progress contact. So where we are there is that all portable and mobile radios, we've received those, they're in our possession. Those were purchased through the ARPA, the radio upgrade, and our obsolete ones can go away. We've determined the unit ID numbering, that convention, that's one of those things you've got to figure out how you're going to do it, if you can figure out what you're going to do. ECC is, has scheduled to begin programming those portable and mobile radios, and there's quite a, quite a bunch. I mean, it's, it's a truckload of radios sitting there. The dispatch changes, there's going to be some changes to how things are dispatched because we'll no longer be dispatching an ambulance and an EFA paramedic. Now we'll be dispatching an ambulance, you know, with paramedic on board as one, one unit. So we, it sounds very simple, but it's extremely technical, and to prevent giving you a headache, I won't even try to get into it. But we've been working through those changes for quite a while and have identified all the different things that need to be touched, and the places that need to be plugged in, this and that, whatever. And so the ECC now has that in their hands to make those, make those changes in their test environment, work through the testing, and when the time is right, when we reach the transition date, they can push that out to the live environment. Station alerting for EMS calls is another thing that we needed to address, how we, you know, alert people in station, in the particular stations we're going to be in, all the technology that goes behind that, and, you know, alerting for ambulance calls in a way that isn't, that works for the volunteers, too. And so we worked with the chiefs and established sort of a pretty good way to do that. And then with the ECC on their end, and so there's a few little technical changes that will have to be made there, but that at least is understood and resolved. Mobile technology, and that's a Pandora's box all its own, that's all the gadgets and the ambulances that make the CAD and the MDC and the EPCR tablet and the Wi-Fi and MiFi and the cradle point and the, yeah, it's all these things that make things work so that they can do their jobs in the ambulance. We've, you know, we've got nine, nine different units from, what, five different companies, I believe. So there were different things out there. And obviously, the IG folks are very, would very much like to standardize what we're working with. Also, some of the equipment is, you know, it's like circuit 2014, which doesn't sound old, but when you're talking about tablets, it's pretty old. And so I defer entirely to their expertise on all that. They've identified, we've identified what we, what we got, they've identified what we need, and I believe Russ and perhaps others, I don't know, will be back to you at some point with the presentation and funding request on that particular deal. But we're making progress there. The West Virginia Office of EMS License Modification, that is complete. We are now capable of transport. I know I got excited and had to communicate that to you guys early. I was thrilled that that came through, when and how it did. So we are, we're good there. We are working on reestablishing billing capability. That is extremely tedious. There are so many details involved. We're working with federal and state government agencies and insurance companies. And I, you know, I've even done this before, I saw it like laid out on a piece of paper and saw the, how many different identification numbers we have for just to bill is insane. We're well underway with the Medicare part, that's the biggest one. We've also, with that submitted, we're on to West Virginia Medicare, and then next up, they're moving on private insurance companies. So we and they are getting, getting through that. We publish RFPs for EMS supplies and the system to manage logistics of the supplies, assets, narcotics, and all that good stuff. And we will be back to you after those RFPs close with a request that would be part of the ARPA EMS system earmark for that, for that deal. Oxygen service is another sort of a thing. We, so each, each of the companies has a contract or service agreement with an oxygen provider. They drop off, you know, oxygen bottles, large and small, whatever amounts, they drop them off, they pick them up on some kind of rotation, you know, they charge rent or they sell bottles, or, you know, just however you can make something complicated in this world, it always seems to be. So what we've been, we have started with the companies that we purchased the ambulance from and then leased them back to them. Those companies, of course, part of our agreements is that we take over all the supply and medical expense and everything. So what we, what we did in the short term was say, okay, please don't cancel your oxygen contract, because then the vendor will come pick up all the bottles and be in trouble. Please don't cancel the contract. Let's call the vendor, we'll call your vendor, we'll transfer that contract to us temporarily so that we can keep things running. And then we will go back and it'll probably involve an RFP to, for the one service, one vendor, you know, all together. And the volunteers have been great about that. You know, they, they worked with us to make that happen and not, not lose anything. Big ticket equipment, so every ambulance has cardiac monitors, about a $40, $45,000 piece of equipment. Has a stretcher, which is about $30,000 piece of equipment. It has an automated chest compression device, who we unanimously say is our employee of the year. The device is called Lucas, and Lucas is our best friend because he does all the compressions and he does a fantastic job. And if you've ever done compressions, it is, yeah, it works out. It doesn't look like it washing it, but when you're, when you're done. Anyway, so all of us EMS providers unanimously agree, Lucas is our, is our favorite guy. He costs about 15, 20 grand, and then there's this chair that is about 14, no, I'm sorry, 4,000 or 5,000 currently. Now, they're working on a motorized version of that, so lord only knows what that thing will cost. I asked if, you know, while they're at it, could they just make it remote control and we can just deploy it from the 911 center? But, you know, we can dream. Anyway, so all those things are very, 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 very expensive. And new models come out, and things get obsolete, and because the monitors in particular, and I believe the Lucas devices are FDA regulated because they deliver treatment, I know I've said this to you before, I'm sorry for repeating, those things have to be constantly updated, sort of like AEDs that you, I know you all talked about that with the sheriff's office. It's currently important to be updated. So the equipment, the agency already owns some of these devices on the chase cars that we have, and they're covered under a maintenance agreement, so that, you know, they come in once a year, they do the PM checks, and they also service anything that goes wrong, and it also gives you a discount on batteries, which batteries can cost 500 to 2,000 for any of these things. The volunteer companies, there are multiple different types of maintenance agreements offered by the vendor, and so different companies have different maintenance agreements, but that's neither here nor there. When they sell the equipment, the maintenance agreement is non-transferable. So the minute we bought those, they were no longer covered, even though there were contracts in place, they're non-transferable. So we're looking at a way to try and get all of this equipment back under one, you know, under the county, under, covered under a maintenance, maintenance agreement, something like that. We're running into some issues because they, they really don't like to put maintenance agreements on things that are over, you know, seven years for this, or eight years for that, or whatever. They, they proposed to us a program that they have, which is a fantastic program that, you know, it's a 10-year contract, and for that 10 years, you enroll all the equipment that you have, and throughout that 10 years, basically, it's there, it's all on them, all their responsibility. They take care of everything. And once you, once you're into your 36 months in the program, if they come out with a new model, they kind of take all your old ones away, put new ones in, and if, if they don't have a new model, then every five years, you get a refresh, you get brand new of the old version. All, everything's, I mean, everything's covered, it's fantastic. The issue that we have with that is that the contract was about 4.5 million for 10 years, so it was going to be like 450,000 a year to maintain those things in that capacity. So, and we had the finance director met with us and met with the vendor and their finance person, and, I mean, it sounds great, it's just, it's very, that's a lot, that's a lot of money. So we're looking for other ways, either under maintenance agreements, or, you know, there may be some things that we need to, you know, put certain things under maintenance agreements, and other things may not qualify, or there may be certain items that would make sense under the program, you know, that will bring the cost down. We're working through all that, I guess is what I'm trying. Long story short, I can't make it short because I've already gone past it. We're hiring for 12 new positions, that, thank you all for approving that at the last meeting, I believe it was. We, I think, it might have been one or four. You did it recently. Thank you for doing that. We began advertising immediately. We thus far have received two applications, and that is not good. So we're, this is what's sort of keeping us awake at night right now. And I don't want to like sugarcoat anything, yes, I know there is hard right now for anybody to find paramedics, doesn't matter, any agency, any jurisdiction, it's tough finding paramedics right now. We haven't done ourselves any favors here in Jopson County with the, with the angst that such a transition brings to all the staff and those looking to go to, if people want to go to a company that's, you know, established and, and they, you know, there's no, no shakeups, and we're in the middle of a shakeup. And so it makes it a little tense for our folks, and certainly it makes ugly in the house, like, oh, we don't know what's going to happen there, and that kind of, and not to mention, our, our pay is, is, you know, it wasn't terrible, and I don't want to say that we, we put together a terrible pay table, because I think it was decent for what we could do at the time, but it, other jurisdictions have taken five or six giant leaps in front of us, and so now, looking back, we're, we're in a, we're in a pickle. And I commend the commission and the ECC and John staff for putting together what you did out at the 911 center. I think it's fantastic. I'd love to do something similar, but I, we cannot afford to, you know, cut 25% of our field staff to fund that for the, who'll just, you know, be killing people, you know, my people, and won't be able to perform well.
I have a quick question. Do you think, like, relocation assistance would help with something like that?
I mean, it's possible. I can't think of anything anecdotal that I've seen in my years that suggests that would be a thing. Usually the folks that are looking at relocating here because a spouse is relocating here, and they happen to be a paramedic, we've had plenty of that. Now, would that make the difference for us getting them in that situation versus another surrounding jurisdiction getting that same person? Perhaps?
I was just curious.
I am up for anything.
I got a question. Does Blue Ridge train paramedics?
Blue Ridge does train paramedics, and they are one of the, one of the institutions that we are currently exploring as a means to take our current EMTs who are interested in becoming paramedics and getting to that level. The problem we've had in the past is that it's been a two-year program, and it has not been very friendly to those that are trying to work a full-time job. So Blue Ridge has, has put some work in, and, you know, Berkeley County's been, Berkeley County's having, you know, needs people, too. So they've been, they've got some new faces involved, and they're, they're, we've not had great luck, I'll be honest with you, with Blue Ridge in the past, we've just not had good experiences. But, you know, they, they seem to be trying to make something better. They've got some ideas about a potential way to pull off a program and partnership, one using workforce grants that would help ease the cost burden as far as tuition and whatnot. So that is one of the avenues we're exploring. We think, looking like now, that might be an avenue to get someone from EMT to a paramedic in a year or less. It'll, it will still require money on our part, because even if the tuition is covered, we've, we've got to get those people, at a minimum, we don't want them to lose money for attending class when they were scheduled to work. We need to, at a minimum, we need to cover that part, make sure they don't lose money to go to class. And then there'd be other obligations that they would have, too, associated with that, like clinical time, some of that they can certainly do with us. This is another improvement that the colleges have been looking at over the last four years. It used to be that they would not let you do any of your field time with your employer, and you definitely couldn't do anything while you were on duty for your employer. Again, that made it hard. You know, you have to, when you're not working, then you have to go put on a different shirt and go obtain these patient contacts, so you get the numbers and whatnot, even though you were doing that already, you know, 40, 50, 60 hours a week, and you had to go do it more on your off time as a student. So it looks like they're, they've worked out some ways to help that, so it might be on to something, but it's going to cost money.
Well, what I was thinking is, what if we put together a scholarship, you pay for it, we have a contract back, two-year commitment to them, come work, work for us, and you pay for the scholarship?
To attract some new people?
Yes. I'm just, I'm just going to float that idea out.
That's nice. Yeah, no, I agree. We've been looking at how do we take our EMTs that are already at a certain level of certification, get them bumped up to where we need them, but that's another angle, too, is to, we would ultimately, we would like to be in a position where we're taking people off the street and, and making them EMTs and firefighters and paramedics.
We'll have a scholarship for each one of them.
Right.
And we can have so many a year that that can apply, and that would be a way out the backfield, you know, and they're starting now, it's going to be rough, but it takes two years to get through the program, but it's, it's something to, yes, it helps us almost.
Put a light at the end of the sun. Right now, there's not one.
That's what I was just saying.
Well, Caleb's point earlier, instead of relocation bonus, what about a sign-on bonus or a referral bonus to existing employees who come on and refer or bring somebody in?
You know, I just, I talked to John about this earlier last week, and I said that referral bonus was genius, but it should have been more.
Well, yeah.
Well, there would have to be stipulations around that, too. You sign on, you're employed a year, you get your, you know, or some many months, or your certifications, or even the referral, you bring the person in and they're hired and they have to be employed for a certain period of time.
Absolutely. I think that could be fantastic, and I think that could also create some, you know, ownership, you know, by everyone, like, Phil, I brought, I brought you in, you know, and we know that happens, and we've gotten many great employees by, from, from that, you know, but we don't have referral programs, we don't have that officially known, but we know that so-and-so talked to so-and-so that, you know, hey, you should come work here, and it ends up happening. I don't think we've got anybody referred in that way that hasn't worked out, to be honest. So I think that's a pretty, pretty good idea. I'm not sure about sign-on bonus. Just, as you know, on our board, Jacob Harris, we have two Harrisons, and I get them confused, and they say I can't refer to them as young Harrison, old Harrison. He, he being a professional recruiter, had some stats and insight on finding that sign-on bonus is really, in the end, don't, don't help. I don't know. I don't know.
Well, even the referral could be, you refer a paramedic versus an EMT, like, a differentiator in just the money to certify, or someone off the street.
And I think that's great. Anything that will, you know, help, help my folks with their income and help bring us in great people, that's a win-win.
I think, I think also, a couple of things. TAP program, tuition assistance program, you should probably look into that, you know, if they're trying to get bumped up a certification, we can provide some TAP money. And then, you know, we probably need to have a discussion with Blue Ridge and say, look, you want to keep your talent pool, let them intern with the agency that would like, would like to post that.
And that's, that's where they, they're evolved to with this, with their current, with their, with their pitching now. We're, yeah, we're over, yeah, that verbal is behind us. I was just kind of going back through history of what the problems have been up until now.
Yeah, I would hate to, I would hate to train someone in this region, and then they just go down. We've lost that talent pool to another agency. We've lost that talent pool to another agency where we could incentivize them to stay here and work in the best county in the state, right?
That's why I was, I was thinking about the scholarship and having them sign a contract to work for another position.
Yeah, it's a tenured thing before you get your payout or any person in there. We get something on every term.
So we'll sit, Cindy and I will sit down with you guys and try to figure out an incentivizing program. All boarding and then also keep, you know, keep people referral. I mean, I think the referrals at 911, you know, 911 folks are very excited about their referral program, although it's not a lot of money, $200 in your pockets, $200 in your pocket.
Sure.
You know, makes a big difference to somebody who, you know, wants to buy that extra bag of groceries or whatever, that $200 is gonna give them, it's game, not much, but, you know.
It's almost a tank of gas.
Yeah, almost.
Right?
If it's diesel, it's not, so.
Uh, so there's a, there's a ton of work on, on our plates over the E S A. Uh, and my team is putting in a lot, a lot, a lot of hours. And I know some of you are probably looking at me like sideways on that because you're just gonna say, well, your team said you had 90% of this stuff done. What's so hard? Uh, here's the thing, um, that, that the 90% estimate was, 90% of the effort required to complete the list of items that Health Net, the one vendor proposed, uh, that is accurate. Half of the items on that list were not, were already done, half were not necessary. Uh, and, and some were gonna be, uh, not very time-consuming. You know, they didn't need to be done and done right. I'm not cracking on Health Net by any means. I'm just saying that, that they had a snapshot and, okay, let's, we don't need to throw all these out. All right, these two are, are almost there. Uh, okay, those two are gonna be some, some serious things and then those are, um, you know, not, those will be fiddies. Uh, so, but that was that, that list. And so that list did not encompass everything that needed to be done for this project. And there are many, many things that we're doing that we're investing, you know? Health Net was assuming in their contract, you were going to deliver them ambulances that were ready to go. So the E S A would have been doing all this work if you had a consultant or not. All the mechanical stuff, all the supply stuff, all the oxygen, all the, the striping, all the, you know, D M V and insurance and all that kind of stuff. Uh, so there are a lot of things that we, we would be doing these things anyway, even if you accepted that proposal. Um, and, you know, I think that sums it up. I'm not gonna beat a dead horse. Does that make sense though?
Because you had to optimize it for us.
Right, right. We, we could have had those, you know, that, that list of 22 things, yeah, cool. You know, that done, no time, not a problem. But now if you want the rest of the stuff, you need to get this project to happen. And I, and I understand that, that most of those things would have been, you know, they would have told us, you know, hey, okay, so you need to do this. And like hiring these 12 people, that wasn't part of the deal either. Well, that's, that's gonna take time and work. Uh, and that's sort of like having a baby. You can't put nine people on the job and get it done in a month. You, it's just the process to get it through. So we're in it, but, um, yeah, we're, if I ever seem like a space cadet, it's because I am. Um, now on to the, the question, the, the ask for guidance that I have for you. Uh, and that is on the space use agreements. This is something that is one of those things, it's gonna take time. And, uh, I'm concerned about where we're getting with that. And I think I'm just sort of going in circles at this point. Uh, and we can make this either a short conversation or a long one, however you guys want it. Um, if, if you want the short one, then, uh, give me somebody to take over this task. Either I'm a commissioner, staff, a broker, whatever you've got, say we got that, we'll take it. Uh, or we can talk about everything I'm confused about and where I'm at, what I need. And I'll start there because I can see you're just hungry to know. This is involving a contract negotiation. Do, do you want to do that in an open session?
I think we should go to do this at close. Because you're talking about contracts with the, uh, the fire departments.
For space use.
Yeah, I, I think we should negotiate that.
Well, unlike what we're talking, we might be throwing out ideas and it's just an idea, it's not costful. So I think it might be better.
So better for open or closed?
Close.
Okay. Um, you want to go into the second session now? I'm maybe going to second session to talk about contract, contract negotiations with the.
Yeah, for the purpose of receiving.
And the purpose of receiving.
Okay.
Moving second, is there any more discussion here? Hearing none, I'll start again.
All right.
Close.
Here's.
I'm going to come out of the section.
Exactly.
Go move in seconds. Is there more discussion? Hearing none, all of you say aye.
Aye.
Post, we are back. We're ready for the session. The next item I have on my agenda is number 13, City Charlestown.
I can tee this one up if you want. Liz Cook approached me, I think last week. If you could, send me an email. I'll have a video. I want to talk about how they like to go up the town. This is my first year from experience, how they like, it's beautiful. And you've already started doing that, right?
Yes.
I saw Liz post.
My guys have been up the last couple days. For the garland up, plus the be kind banners that give them, we'll take the banner down. They're ready for the tree lighting.
Liz approached me and said that the garland on the courthouse specifically is done. It's just done.
Yeah, there's a picture and you can see where it's kind of getting thin. It's very hard for Jim to, you know, maneuver.
Fast and useful.
As we put it up every year, during the after hours, soon as we get it up, there's lots of greenery that comes up, it's all in the courthouse. We have to pull it off a good bit.
So when Liz approached me, my question was, what do you want? Because I wanted to put the lights up and stuff. But so you're coming today to request and purchase garlands. So I'll just let you continue.
Okay. Thank you for having me. So I wrote just something that I'm just going to read just to hit some points. So what I'm here today asking is that the county purchased new garland that is specifically used to decorate the county buildings. The current garland has been in use for about 20 years and is becoming extremely thin and hard to work with. Additionally, the deteriorating state of the garland has been noted in recent years by our community. The city purchased this original garland in its entirety and we would like to replace the garland in phases. So first this year, we were going to do the railings on the magistrate building and the courthouse, and the next year, we want to do the columns on the courthouse. The price estimate for the prelit garland for the railings is around $3,700. And this estimate is for commercial grade garland. It's going to be custom for the rails, so we'll know exactly where it goes. It'll be specific to the buildings. And it's made for cities' outdoor commercial displays. I do want to touch on the importance of the decorations. Over the years, Christmas in Charlestown has become an economic driver for our downtown businesses. Thousands of people to town for Small Business Saturday, the Charlestown City and Tree Lighting, and the Charlestown Christmas Parade. We also host a Christmas tour, which attracts visitors to our town. For three years, we've invited residents to bring their children to make ornaments that we hang on the Charlestown Christmas tree, which is of course on the courthouse lawn. Last year, over 400 children participated in this event. Our community loves this event and it's a testament as to how Christmas in Charlestown has had a positive impact on our downtown economy. There are countless family photos and pictures of people standing in front of the courthouse with the columns all lit up. It's beautiful in the evenings. Since Charlestown is the county seat, a vibrant, successful downtown reflects positively on the county and we feel that it supposes both the benefit to the city and the county as a whole. We are committed to continue our efforts to decorate the town because we think it's inviting for patrons and residents. Jim is here with me. He is in charge of the maintenance team and they are responsible for all of the decorating in the city. And just to give you an idea, on the county buildings alone, they spend no less than 37 hours decorating just the county buildings with 541 feet of garland, 35 wreaths, and 30 strands of lights. And I put that in breakdown in your packet. And we would just like your partnership in this endeavor.
Thank you. Did I hear correctly that what you've been using has lasted 20 years?
20 years, yes. So pretty good lifespan.
You'll get the same quality.
Yes, and it's coming from a company that does this passionately.
That's unheard of, 20 years.
Yeah.
For outside definition, yeah.
Now, I was going to ask the same question, why did you put that in the report? And thank you all for doing it because you make our railings very festive during the holiday seasons. And that deal is completely picked up by the City of Charlestown.
Yeah, absolutely.
John, would you recommend coal severance if we were to fund it?
We looked at coal severance wouldn't qualify, but we could do a one-time use fund balance.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, I'll make the motion that County Commission pays for the garland and lights and so forth that are associated with Christmas decorations on the county buildings. We have an S balance here for an estimate, or is this an estimate?
So this is, so this one is just for what we were going to do this year, which is just the railings, the columns. It's probably going to be an additional $6,000. We were going to do those next year.
Can I just ask you a question? So this says includes 8% discount through 10/31. Are we sure that's still applicable?
I think I can make it work because we're a Main Street community and we're doing it through a company that gives Main Streets discounts. So I think we'll be able to still get that discount.
Sorry. So with making the motion, I need to clarify, is this a solid figure?
This, the estimate I provided, yes.
Yeah.
I would just say not to exceed that threshold.
Yeah. Well, motion, then you'll get this right. For a total amount of, let's say, $3,800.
A little win win.
And to be taken out of.
And we'll, you know, general fund, unexpended funds at the end of the year. Yes, we can do that.
Second.
It's been moving seconds. Is there more discussion? Hearing none, all of you say aye.
Aye.
Post.
Thank you very much. See you again.
All right, next I think is all you, John.
Yes. First one I have is an offer request. We have broker deals with every volunteer fire company for for equipment supplies. Shepherdstown was the last one out. We finally got all of their information and their itemized list. So the requisition 23038 for related equipment from Shepherdstown Volunteer Fire Department into the, for the total amount of $51,684.13, funding is recommended to be provided from the ARPA grant fund as public safety equipment is an eligible ARPA grant expense. I just want to remind you that that brings our ARPA balance down in that, with that respective line item to 1958616791. So I just, I wanted to make sure I gave you that corrected ARPA amount. That's what we have dispensed so far.
Mr. John, what is the equipment? Did we give the other ones 38? Was that, is that for radios or what is that?
No, 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 no. This is all for, and there was another one that's here. It's, it's, it's all the medical supplies and equipment. There's pages and pages over here, tube holders, alcohol press backwards, asking.
Surrogates and needles.
Yeah, nasal things, saline locks, stable. I mean, there's, there's 10 pages of.
Okay.
This is everything that we need to outfit that.
Okay, I'm sorry. I was misunderstanding. I thought it was a separate request from Shepherdstown on the EMS. My apologies.
This will complete all of the supplies and material for the equipment for everything. They were just, they were the last ones.
I'm moving to through the requisition 23038 for the purchase of animals with the supplies amount of $51,684.13 funded by ARPA grant fund.
It's been moved in seconds. Is there more discussion? Hearing none, all speakers say aye.
Aye.
Post, if you care.
The second one is the transfer signatory. It's just an information thing. Will will be forwarding to a letter for the transfer grant signatory to me. It was originally to Michelle Haddock. It's going, we'll get that prepared and we'll get that in front of you. The other one, I think, I don't know. The LP, LTP card information request, I think I figured that one out. We have provided the Shadle with the list, raw list of the names of P card holders minus any other sensitive.
Okay, and we answered Mr. White's request?
I did.
Okay.
Yes, I emailed them yesterday. I copied you, Michelle, on that.
I think it's all resolved.
Okay, we got it figured out. The last thing.
Can we, I'm sorry, before we get into the job description, which might be like, there's also another letter that we're going to approach you for signature for a new bank account that is for teen circuit court, teen court.
Yes.
Tax office requested it. The bank account we had went inactive because they haven't been using it, but they're again collecting funding. So if you could sign that letter, we got that prepared today.
Do you have any questions?
Oh, I think we do.
Okay.
Maybe it was existing, just inactive, I think.
Yeah, I think it'd be good.
So the last thing I had here is a discussion of financial director job description. And I asked Park Chen to be here because, again, this is all knitted together with what you were talking about earlier. I provided you folks this body with the copy of the job description a couple of weeks ago. I have, I have another copy. What's the current position, meaning reads? And once, you know, we want to have a discussion. I think you, I don't know why to have a discussion today to see if you wanted to amend the position, the script, change, whatever you want to do. So I will leave up to you folks for discussion. I don't, you know, and if there's an actual list or anything that's there as well. This job description was originally put together in 2011. And I don't know if that's the year that they hired their first finance director. I'm not sure. I don't know. Yeah, prior to that, I'm not sure.
That's what I'm trying to say. I can't tell you the year.
So it's a pretty comprehensive job description. Put in a little of everything that Club Shadle had said today. And if you wanted to make any of those changes for her recommendations, that's certainly going to have an impact on this. That absolutely is going to have an effect. So.
I mean, I looked at a couple items that I can send you that I believe based on after budget is set by us in the overview, based on the auditor's report. I just have a couple items that'd be happy to email you just to look at and consider if we decide to.
Yeah, I think what may want to just send to everybody and then.
Yes.
And it's in a Word document, so you can redline it, amend it, strike it, whatever you want to do. And then we can try to package it up with all the comments. I think what we'll try to do, Cindy and I will try to do is we can, we can put it in a Word document and we can redline it with a comment section on the side. And then as you make comments, then the document just grows.
Yes.
Okay? So, so everybody's comments are captured in one document. You know what I mean?
Yeah. Well, I guess I had one question for Jackie. I haven't, I was trying to listen the best I could and there was one thing I wanted some clarity on. And I looked through, under payroll, you had said or written that no extra compensation shall be granted or allowed to any public officer, agent, server, contractor. So would that include what we were discussing earlier today about like referral bonuses? Or does that fall under extra compensation? Because that was.
The extra compensation, I think that part of code that is good and that's probably a naming question.
Yeah.
But that deals to us elected officials. We're not allowed to get like merit increases. If you guys give merit increases, none of us get that.
Yeah, I guess I was wondering for clarity on that line and how that plays into signing bonuses and referrals.
That is certainly an, an eighty question.
Yeah, and I mean, just to, item 10 identifies the area and takes immediate action. That's something I think, that's just a, I've got a recommendation for that that they worked with and presented to you and the commission. There needs to be something adjusted. It's number 10.
Yeah, on page three.
Yeah, sorry. I mean, that's just, I mean, that's what I'm saying. I'll just redline stuff and send it to you because that says take immediate action. And I think we should know what's going on. Yeah.
So there's a, so you felt that sort of the chain of authority.
The chain.
No, I get that. The checks and balances, for lack of a better word. Okay.
So I'll just, I mean, I've got a couple. I'll just redline and send it to everybody. Everybody can comment or like send it to John since we can't do it.
If you tell that, I mean. And Cindy and I will.
Yeah. Yeah, okay.
And then get it back to you. Because I would like to bring this back and maybe the Shadles items back at the next commission meeting for further discussion and action. So we can bring closure to all this and move ahead. And in the interim, we have, we are getting resumes and so we would like to proceed with interviews for the financial director or the director of financial management. Because we're. Need it.
Yeah.
And, you know. And I have to look at your stuff because it's the first time I've heard it today. I really need to get my head, there's a lot to unpack there. So I've got to kind of get my head around all that. I'm sure you do too. There's a lot to unpack here. But I want to make sure that I make a commitment that we move forward.
Yeah.
No issues. I really just, only four. You know, got to get there.
So is that agreement that we can start interview scheduling or?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, I think that's, we definitely.
Just we open with your reviews that the description could change.
Probably slightly, not major changes, but yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think, you know, we're going to start lying this next week. And it's my, my goal at the next commission meeting to have a candidate in front of you. So we'll wait for your edits to come in and we're excited about this. We want to get this moving and get our team together. If he has anything else on this, I only have one other thing to do. Which is I want to give kudos to Cindy, my new HR partner, because we said first time, I think, a long time, whatever. We put together a veteran's honor roll on the corner website. So we're getting pictures in now. It's really exciting. And.
It's so fun.
And the staff, the staff are really loving that because we really need to recognize our veterans for Veterans Day. And, and then we are getting some good response for Hot Lot Lunch coming up on the weekend. And I hope you can all come to that. It's going to be in the main courtyard. Come on and eat one red dish. We'll take it.
I do cook. I was joking when I said.
If you want to get some of our cookies, we're good at that. We'll take anything, but it's going to be a lot of fun that day. From 11:00. Yeah, no alcohol. But we will have some late breakfasts and some other fun things going on. We're really looking forward to, I think it would mean a lot for the staff to see you folks there and the other elected officials. Jackie, please bring your staff out. We love to have balance for invited.
That's what you're bringing. So that's at the.
Everybody.
Yeah, we're at the main radio. Yep, because we, yeah, we're looking for the biggest venue I can find. So that's.
Yeah, I wasn't sure about this.
Yeah, and are not, you know, one, people can sneak in.
Yeah, that's right.
So can we share?
Share right out.
All right. Is there anything else for this morning session? Hearing none, there's no objection. We are recessed.
All right, I approach you to sign this letter. What's the protocol?
You stand, watch your photograph.
Thank you. And then, oh, Jackie sent your, Jackie.
She'll be right away.